Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the public hearing on the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on the public hearing or on the budget?
Roger, Roger, can we take roll call?
Uh, did you wanna do that before we go into the formal meeting?
I do wanna take roll call to make sure that we have a quorum here for the public hearing.
Okay, Lynn, go ahead then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President.
Mike Ganzer.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Present.
Tammy Newberry.
Present.
Chuck Phillipson.
Here.
Roger Trutman.
Here.
Lori Wertz.
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Lynn. Okay, is there anyone in the meeting that would like to, from the public, that would like to speak on the twenty twenty-one budget? Uh, hearing none, I guess I look for motion to close the public hearing.
Ganzer, Mike, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Tammy Newberry, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, going to item two, approval of the consent agenda.
You're super bowl of the agenda.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Michael Bell, I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak?
Oh, yes, I would, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, this is Deb Hendrick. Uh, I'm the owner of the Glare's Stuba on five eighteen First Street, and I also am a resident of that address. And I'm here, um, um, because I wanna talk to you guys about item five on your agenda. Um, and it's about the motion to rescind the approval of the permit for the Christmas market in December. Um, I'd really like for you guys to rescind the permit for the market. Um, reasons being, it's gonna close the, um, street in front of my business, the five hundred block of First Street, and the two streets, um, that, well, one of the streets that borders us on Fifth Avenue, two blocks of Fifth Avenue. Um, we're a restaurant, so right now, um, the bulk of our business is carryout, curbside pickup. Um, and closing these streets for five days is really gonna hurt our business. We're open four of those days, Thursday through Sunday. And this permit, um, closes the street starting at eight AM on Thursday morning, and the Christmas market doesn't start until four o'clock on Friday afternoon. So it effectively would kill our, all of our business on Thursday, all of our carryout business, which right now accounts for about seventy percent of our business. You know, and we're trying to operate as safely as we can, and we don't necessarily, we only have a few tables inside, our bar is not open. Um, and, you know, a lot of our customers might not feel comfortable walking through a, a market with a lot of people in order to get to our place. We also might have to contend with a lot of people coming in wanting to use the bathroom, or whatever, which we're trying to avoid right now to keep everybody safe. And, you know, ordinarily, we can, you know, get through these closures of the street because we have lots of other weekends to make up for, but right now, we're just trying to survive, and, uh, we're trying to make enough money to, uh, pay our bills, our suppliers, our employees, and our utility bills. Um, so I would just ask that you guys don't allow the street closures at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, moving on, uh, item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll make a motion, sorry?
Go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ganzer, Mike, I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item five, consideration discussion, motion to rescind approval of Kris Kendall market permit approved on ten twenty twenty twenty. Uh, Drake, you wanna speak on this a little bit, please?
Sure, um, so on October twentieth, the Village Board approved a special event permit application submitted by the Newglarus Chamber of Commerce. Uh, two members have requested the item reappear on the agenda. Uh, their reasoning was they wanted to discuss, uh, potentially relocating the event. Um, to discuss this item, uh, the board must first rescind its previous action. If the motion to rescind is successful, discussion on the permit, uh, of any kind, um, including relocation of the event, or any other, um, changes to the, uh, to the permit or issuance of it, uh, may begin. Um, so first, in order to discuss the permit again, the board has to rescind its previous action on the item.
I will, I'll make a motion to rescind the item.
Ganzer, Mike, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Uh, yeah, Lynn, will you roll call this, please, for me?
Sure. Michael Bell.
No.
Uh, excuse me, Lynn, would you repeat the motion?
Sure, the motion is to rescind the approval of the Kris Kendall market permit.
Thank you.
And then can I have a point of clarification also? We have to make a motion to rescind in order to talk about it at all, correct?
Correct, the board has to rescind its previous action in order to revisit the item.
Okay.
Okay, so I have Michael Bell as a no vote. Mike Ganzer?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trutman?
Yes.
Lori Wertz?
No.
Motion carries five two.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Now? Or do we go to item eight?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, moving on. Uh, consideration discussion, special event permit application for Kris Kendall market by Newglarus Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Becca, you're on, would you like to speak at this time, please?
Um, sure, so the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors has met since the permit was granted and discussed it at great length, and ultimately voted to continue supporting the market as we believe it would be a big economic driver to our downtown businesses. Um, you all know, retail, restaurants, bars have been hit really, really hard over the last six, seven, eight months, and, uh, we feel like a big weekend like this could help kind of pad the coffers and get people through winter. Um, we think that the holiday season is gonna be a big deciding factor in whether a lot of businesses stay open or not, whether they open back up in the spring. So, Chamber of Commerce, um, would like this to continue.
Okay, Becca, thank you.
And I'll just clarify for the board, so with the rescinding, uh, it's if the, uh, uh, at this point, it's as if the permit was not issued. Um, so, uh, any, anything, and discussion on the, the merits of the permit, uh, changes to the permit, whether to issue the permit, all of that is, is, um, up for, for discussion as well. It's as if the board is discussing it again for the, for the first time.
I guess I would just like to say that, uh, part of the reason for, uh, my agreeing to the rescinding is, uh, I believe that the, the public health emergency that we were facing has gotten, um, significantly higher than it was back in October. And, um, we also received information from public health, uh, informing us that they would, you know, prefer that we didn't do this. And, um, we talked this summer several times, um, if any of our decisions that we made, caused a change or, or we saw a change in the number of cases, uh, we would come back and revisit it. And I guess, um, my feeling is, um, and from what I'm understanding, um, this kind of event would possibly cause people to congregate. And I would like to see us try to help our other, our local businesses in other ways at this time, if it's through more promotions or, you know, helping people to, uh, facilitate, you know, uh, um, like pick up and make appointments to shop and different things like that.
This is Peggy, and I was assuming that you received the, uh, email that I sent about the, um, businesses that I had, uh, frequented, or I, not frequent, but had visited. Um, and then I did one more, uh, so, six. And those businesses all said, uh, that they would favor responsibility over their, um, participation, and maybe some planning to make the year, the following year, uh, successful, but there was not one of them who was vehemently, uh, opposed to rescinding it. And I agree with Tammy, um, there, I, I voted in favor. I wanted, uh, the businesses to thrive, but then after, um, honestly, after listening to the news tonight, and also after, um, talking with constituencies on the, uh, Main Street, I am firm believer that we do what one of the, uh, uh, business owners so strongly said, "I trust that you will do the responsible thing," and that sort of sits with me.
Ganzer, Mike here. Um, I read an article in Sunday's paper that really kind of hit home for me. And, uh, actually, two articles, but one was written by a nurse in, in Dodgeville. Uh, and she says that the public hold, she's asking that the, the public hold its leaders accountable for a plan to keep Wisconsinites safe. And that really hit home with me as, um, with the news this evening that, um, Dean County, um, Public Health Agency for the next twenty-eight days said that there's no more than eight people to be gathered outside. Um, those amongst some other things that, that, uh, has come up, um, leads me to believe that, uh, that this should not take place. I, I know I, originally, I approved of it, but, uh, that was in October, and things have gotten, taken a turn for the worse in the way of our, our, of this COVID nineteen. And, um, I don't see that clearing up in the next thirty days. Um, even the headlines, I think in today's paper, said that, um, most all of the hospitals in the immediate area are, are, uh, full. Um, another thing that, that I look at is that there's at least twenty-one to twenty-five kiosks that have been, um, applied for, and it will be there. And I, how, how many of those are local? I think there's only three or four that are actually local. So I'm, I'm questioning as to how much it's really gonna benefit the, the downtown area.
Tammy, or, uh, Becca, can you jump in there with those statistics for us?
Yes, so of the kiosks that we have booked, um, four of those kiosks are, have been reserved by local businesses. The other kiosks are, they're reserved overwhelmingly by Green County residents, but not, um, chamber members. Some of them are Newglarus residents, some of them are from Monroe and other places.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Becca.
This is Roger. Uh, for someone that has been down in the Kris Kendall markets in Chicago multiple times, I think it would be a great thing to have Newglarus do this. I just think it is absolutely the wrong year to be doing this. Uh, just, uh, like, with the numbers going up, and, uh, I just heard that, um, Turner Hall used to have dances on Sundays, they're now shutting down indefinitely. Um, so they aren't even gonna have any kind of entertainment there for, for who knows how long. And I just don't think we need to be bringing all kinds of people into town and creating a, uh, just a area of who, you know, what could happen. So, like I said, I would be in favor of it if it just was a different year and the different circumstances. That's all I have to say. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on it? Any more discussion?
I believe everyone has their own opinions on, on what they want to, uh, vote on. I know, I, I easily can see and understand why everyone's gonna vote the way they do. Uh, I'm just gonna have to make one last plea that, uh, people start thinking about our small businesses. And even though we're not gonna have this Kris Kendall mart this year, you still need to go out and support these local businesses this year. Otherwise, we're, we're not gonna have them. And what makes Newglarus is every little aspect of Newglarus. Every single business adds a little chunk to who we are. And I am outright petrified between the depression of the winter, the way things have been going this entire year, and, and everything like that, I don't, I do not see how many businesses are gonna be coming through on the other side because of this. So, please, just really consider, please get the word out to try and support these smaller businesses, these local businesses. You know, the, even if there is, they don't have a drive-up window to, to get food to go, do this takeout, go to a window and see if you can window shop or something.
Thank you, Mike.
Well said, Mike. I concur, Mike, I, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Absolutely, I hope we can find, uh, some way to help them, so we'll keep thinking on it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Uh, we need a motion?
We don't.
No, we don't?
We don't.
All right, we're, we're fortunate enough to have our, our village attorney on the call, actually, so Bill can, they don't need a active motion to deny a permit, they can move on.
If there is, if there is, uh, no, uh, motion to, uh, grant it, it will fail by, uh, lack of action.
Thank you. So if there's no motion to be made, uh, we'll move on. Uh, to item number six, consideration discussion adoption ordinance three oh six, wireless telecommunications facility in the right-of-way. Drake?
Sure, so earlier in twenty twenty, uh, the Municipal Electric Utilities of Wisconsin, or MEUW, drafted an ordinance regulating, uh, wireless telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way. MEUW is a state association which represents the interests of community-owned electric utilities, uh, in Wisconsin. Administration forwarded their draft ordinance to our village attorney for review. Uh, that draft ordinance was included in your packet. Uh, its main purpose is to provide the village with a process for managing, uh, uniform standards for acting upon requests for the placement of wireless telecommunications facility within the right-of-way. And then I will turn it over to Bill for, uh, perhaps a, a brief description and, uh, let you know kind of what it is, and then why we think it's, uh, uh, a, a, a benefit to the village to adopt this as a new chapter in our ordinances.
Thank you, and, uh, pick up right there, uh, this is, uh, being proposed as a separate standalone, uh, chapter. It is not, uh, intended to be part of the zoning ordinance, and the reason for that is I don't want to have a public hearing and have to go through that process every time that a permit comes through. And so we are proposing that this be a standalone ordinance, uh, section, chapter, rather, three oh six. Uh, is, uh, Drake noted, um, this allows the village to regulate the placement of small wireless facilities, um, cell, uh, facilities, the five G that everyone's talking about, and we'll, we'll eventually get here, and we'll undoubtedly be followed by something even newer and better and faster, and probably smaller. Um, uh, but it allows us to regulate, uh, those and have the process to do this. Uh, we took a draft, we, we made it work for, uh, the village, and then we, uh, sent it to our engineers, who is actually going to administer, uh, this for the village. Um, I think that, uh, I, I'm, I'm asking that you adapt it because if you don't have it, when you do get those requests, you will not have a process to evaluate them, you will not have a process to deny them, uh, if, if appropriate. Um, uh, and, and I think that, uh, it, without this, um, we won't be attractive, um, to those providers that are gonna want to have this. Um, the other reason I, I think it is good is because it does make us attractive. It does follow the, uh, protocol and procedures that other communities are adapting. It is the same, uh, roughly speaking, um, uh, rulebook, and, and so that's something they'll be familiar with. And I, I think that you'll see, uh, providers look to Newglarus to provide this service, which I think will be a benefit to small businesses and residents and, and everyone else. If you have any specific questions about it, uh, let me know. Um, uh, it, it doesn't apply to residences, uh, if you have a tower, uh, you have, uh, your ham tower, if you have your, uh, dish on your house, it doesn't, doesn't apply to any of those things. It, it, it is, um, limited in scope and, uh, location.
So point of clarification, this is just so that they can run it in the right-aways that we already have existing, and we can still make a judgment on whether or not, yes, we wanna grant that, or no, we don't. But it's not to create new right-aways.
That, that is absolutely correct, yes, this is existing right-aways. We're not looking, uh, to add right-of-way, uh, areas, though, as the village grows or changes, uh, subdivision comes in and, and there's a right-of-way, it certainly would apply there, yes. But beyond that, no, we're not looking by this ordinance to dictate where they will be located. It is merely in the existing public right-of-way.
Okay.
And only subject to the, 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 the regulations here. So it's not a carte blanche to, uh, i- install them in every right-of-way. They still have to go through the process, still has to be appropriate, has to, the engineers have to say, yes, this is a good location. Uh, no, you can co-locate here, we're not going to allow you to, um, have one on every pole.
Okay.
Ganzer, Mike here, I would, uh, move for the adoption of ordinance, chapter three oh six.
I'll second, Tammy.
Okay, any further discussion?
If you wanna, just to regular, just roll call, roll call.
Okay, uh, Lynn, we'll do a roll call, hold on this one, too, please.
Okay, uh, just for the record, I have this one numbered, ordinance twenty dash oh six.
Okay.
Okay, just so I can include it that way. Mike Bell?
Yes.
Mike Ganzer?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trutman?
Yes.
Lori Wertz?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you all, I'm gonna sign off, but I'm gonna take this opportunity to wish everyone a, a happy and safe Thanksgiving, uh, although, uh, our gatherings will undoubtedly be much smaller than we're used to, so.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Bill.
Take care, Bill, thanks for coming up.
Thanks, Bill, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, bye.
Thank you, Bill.
Bye.
Okay, Parcel Recreation Committee report, Chuck?
Uh, Parks and Rec, meet.
Oh, that's good.
Well, thank you.
Okay, moving on then. Public Works and Public Safety, uh, committee report.
Uh, Drake, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this over to you or to, uh, Michael, since I was not present.
Um, Michael, I'll, I'll leave it to you, as, as, uh, you chaired the meeting.
Oh, yeah, and I don't have my notes in front of me here either, of course, of course. I bet you twenty bucks I left them upstairs, too.
Uh, I can, I, I, I can do my best, if, if that's amenable to you, Mike.
That'd be great, thank you very much, Drake.
Okay, um, so some of the items, one, one of the items you, you'll, we'll, we'll come to later, but, uh, we're getting ready to start designing the wastewater treatment plant, um, in order to keep, uh, keep pace with the DNR, uh, scheduling requirements, uh, to meet their new regulations, um, by, um, the mid twenty twenties. Um, so we'll, we'll come to that work order later, and other, and then the only other major thing, uh, that I updated Public Works, Public Safety on is that, uh, Mike Fenley, our, uh, building inspector and zoning administrator for the past, um, sixteen years, uh, did announce his retirement, he, uh, delivered a letter, uh, to the village. Um, so he'll be retiring, uh, at the end of this year, December, uh, thirty-first, uh, this is his final day. He'll be, um, kind of entering into a, 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 more of a part-time role. Uh, his, his, the person designated to take over is, uh, Scott Jelly. Uh, the Public Works and Public Safety Committee, uh, acknowledged the retirement, and then also, um, did ask that, uh, I draft a RFP, uh, for consideration, uh, to this, so that the, uh, committee can, uh, both determine if they would like to continue on with, uh, total building inspection, um, uh, or if they would like to, um, open it up to an RFP. Um, and so that would obviously go to the committee and then to the, uh, board, uh, for consideration to determine if we would like to carry on with their succession plan as they've laid out, or if the board would like to go to an RFP to, um, see what other, um, who might bid on, uh, that service, uh, for the village. Those are the, the two main things out of the committee this past, uh, at its past meeting.
Thank you, Drake. Um, moving on, item B, consideration discussion approval of reimbursement resolution for wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project.
Uh, so as we continue moving towards the, uh, ultimate goal of, uh, the upgrade to comply with the state's, uh, new, uh, regulatory requirements, uh, we will start incurring costs. Um, at the advice of our, uh, financial advisor, advisor, elders, uh, they have noted it's, uh, never a bad thing to approve a reimbursement resolution. What this allows us to do is if we have expenses that we use cash for, that when we go out for the large borrow, uh, to pay for the upgrade, uh, we will be able to reimburse ourselves, uh, for certain expenses if we so chose to do so. Um, so having this in place, uh, gives the village some additional flexibility at the time of the borrow to determine, um, what, uh, expenses the village would like to fund through the borrow versus any cash, um, expenses we've had up to, uh, that point. So, uh, administration is, uh, recommending approval.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-six, the declaration, Declaration to Reimburse Expenditures.
Ganzer, Mike, I would second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we want to put a vote on this? Sure. Okay. All, I don't have the number down here, but all in favor of the reimbursement resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consideration, discussion, approval of work order from Strand Engineering for Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Improvement Project, design totaling $344,900.
To meet the progress metrics of the DNR standards, Strand will need to begin designing our plant upgrade. Total cost for their services is $344,900. Their work order and transmittal letter, which detail how they come up with the, with their charge for this service, are included in the packet. Public Works and Public Safety Committee recommended approval. And this, at this point, this will be, we intend to pay for this out of, this will be one of those reimbursable expenses, but we will, we intend to use the replacement line item, a line item within the wastewater utility budget that has adequate funds to cover this expense.
I'm gonna go ahead, this is Peggy, to approve the work order for Strand Engineering, Strand Engineering for the WWTP capital improvement, design totaling $344,000, that would be nice, $344,000, $344,900.
Gansford, Mike, I would second that motion.
Okay. Motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, Fire District Committee Board, I'm sorry, I'm, Fire District Board Committee Report.
I guess that would be me. The most significant thing I can say is, is that we are still making progress on the 30-year agreement that formed the district with all the municipalities. We had a lengthy meeting this morning to get everybody comfortable with some suggested improvements to the agreement to make it, you know, worthy of going forward into the next couple of decades here. I feel that went pretty positive. The fire department stated that they enjoyed being a part of the Halloween parade, and they also were involved in and assisted with the creation of 500 gift bags from all of the area businesses, and police, fire, and ambulance to distribute to the kids at the school and to the kids that are also all online. So they were received very well from everything that I understand. So that was a nice thing to do, to make Halloween a little bit better. And that's pretty much where we're at with that.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. Item 10, Library Board Committee Report. Tammy?
Yeah, me. Holly, I hope I get this right. We would like to say that we will be building in 2021, we're pretty confident on that. We do have an opportunity to look at a different location other than Durst Road. And we feel that in order to exercise due diligence, we are going to look at that option to see if we can get more building for the money that we already have in hand. Although, you know, fundraising is always open, we're gonna, we're gonna start looking at things with the money that we have. So that's kind of the excitement that we have going on with that.
Okay, Tammy.
And I guess I should say that we are gonna continue with the outside window, and that we're hoping to do a little bit of improvement for that to make it a little bit more useful for the winter. But it's working, people are using it, and I think everyone understands that keeping those materials safe is important. So we like the window.
Okay, Tammy. And again, thank you very much for serving on both these boards. I know it's a handful for you, so I greatly appreciate it.
It's been a learning experience.
I'm sure it has. Okay. Item 11, consideration, discussion, 2021 budget and corresponding resolutions. Drake?
The necessary resolutions to adopt the 2021 budget are included in your packet. They reflect the discussions that have taken place to date. The summary budget documents, as well as the general fund line item, are also included in your packet. The board may adopt each resolution, items A through H through one motion, if desired.
Gansford, Mike here. I see no reason I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution 18 through 25. That would be letters A through H all at once.
This is Chuck. I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? I think it's pretty much all cut and dried. The staff has done an excellent committee, boy, the staff has done an excellent job again this year of putting the budget together. My kudos to Drake and Lynn and Wendy for doing their job and all the, like Joe and everybody else for getting theirs in and staying as close to budget as we possibly can. So if there's no further discussion, Lynn will better take a roll call vote on this, please.
Okay. Mike Bell.
Yes.
Mike Gansford.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yes.
Lori Wertz.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, one and all. Moving on to the president's report. Mr. Bell, Mr. Gansford, Mrs. Cruz, and myself are up for reelection in the spring. In December, Lynn will have all the paperwork ready for us for nomination papers to pick up if we're gonna run again. If you're not gonna run again, you need to fill out a form of non-declaration candidacy. When will you have those ready, Lynn?
Um, when, they're gonna actually be in your box next week, probably on Wednesday, the Declaration of Non-Candidacy with a memo on what to do with that. And then if you choose to run, let me know. You can start getting signatures on December 1st. So the packets are ready. I can put one in your box or whatever. You, just let me know if you need one.
So Lynn, I have a question. I think I asked you this before. So the state is still mandating that we go door-to-door or continue to make contact with people in order to get the signatures?
I have not heard anything different than that. Obviously, it's, you don't necessarily have to go door-to-door. Someone needs to circulate that paper for you. You know, you don't have to do everyone yourself. But whoever circulates the paper for you needs to see those people sign it.
Okay.
So if you have someone out, you know, if there's a friend at work that says, well, I'll take it and get, you know, signatures of this group of people, that's fine. You just have to have the circulator of the paper witness those people signing it. And then they have to sign on the bottom as well that they circulated.
So the state really hasn't thought that through, because in a sense, the circulator is still making contact with people.
Yeah. Yeah. I, at least we haven't heard anything, but you know, they're still, they're still focused on a presidential election at this point. But yeah, they have not, there's been no news from them about doing it anything different.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I hope some of you will consider, I hope all of you will consider staying or letting the electoral people decide, but trying anyway to stay with us.
Okay. I guess if there's, is there anything else anybody would like to bring up, otherwise? Hearing none, we will, we are adjourned. Good night, all.
Good night. Good night, everybody.